Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our board meeting for Monday, January 23rd. Mr. Aristocazian, would you call roll, please?
Dr. Shively. Dr. White.
Here.
Mr. Alloz.
Here.
Dr. Beckpulley.
Here.
Dr. Donahue.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Rashudi.
Mr. Fashionetto.
Here.
And Mrs. Schenkel.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Roy for recognition tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fashionetto. The Pennsylvania School Boards Association designates January as School Director Recognition Month. There are 4,500 school directors that serve nearly 2 million public education students across Pennsylvania's 500 public school districts, with all boards having nine members. Board members are elected to serve four-year terms, and they serve as volunteers without pay. Pennsylvania school boards are committed to providing every student the opportunity to grow, to grow and achieve. This evening we want to honor our school board members and recognize them for their service to our community, and we have a few ways we'll do that at their seats is a certificate from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association for your, to show their appreciation of your leadership. We also have them for our student members as well, and we have them for the junior alternates. So if you could deliver those to the juniors, I'd appreciate that, Jasnelli and Jessica. So we, a few things we'd like to do tonight. First, the Freedom High School Choir Chorus is here, or a select group of them. So we're going to come down and perform "Up Close and Personal," we call it. We know that our board members get out a lot, but it's nice to see some of the wonderful students that our board members' efforts support in person. So, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. We're grateful to be here. We're the freedom of this beautiful room, and we thank you for all that you do for Bethlehem Area School Districts, especially for our music programs and for all of our students who are here tonight to send a message of thanks with a song they love.
Thank you. It was beautiful, and I know that we ask you to do a lot, Ms. Volpato, and you always respond, so I appreciate it. But it's, I was gonna say, that's what I was gonna say, like, like, I'm just calling, saying, "Yeah, they'll show up," but you actually have to prepare for that, right? Yeah. And you carried a piano over from Freedom, really impressive. So, but, but I know it does take, you don't just show up. So, thank you for putting the extra time. Thanks to the students, putting the extra time in to do this tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, as part of our board recognition this evening, we have Mr. Rick Amato as Principal of Governor Wolf here, who's here to say a few words on behalf of administrators and principals.
Thank you very much for having me come tonight. As the president of the Act 93 Group, I want to thank you for your service, and I'm gonna leave you with a quote from one of my favorite movies, and it's the movie Claws. It's the animated version on Netflix. The main character movie says this: "One good deed of service sparks another," and "Your good deeds of service spark 13,000 good deeds of service," because that's how many students enter our buildings around us every day. And the decisions that you make for the curricular decisions, for all the, the policies and practices that put in place for our students, you allow us as the Act 93 Group of Leadership to lead that. But then, at the end of the year, 1,000 students leave, and do, they spark their good deeds to make the world a better place than it already is, and they're just gonna make it better, and that's because of your service. So, we can't thank you enough. It is a, it's a great service that you do, sometimes unnoticed, because it's, it's, it's a voluntary service, but it is a deed that sparks so many other good deeds. So, thank you very much on behalf of the Act 93 Group.
Thank you, Mr. Amato, and Laura Ketting, President of the Bethlehem Education Association. Thank you for being here and saying a few words.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here to recognize you. Again, as I prepared, I realize this is the sixth time I've been able to address our board. I'm grateful for that, but what I'm more grateful for are the faces that have stayed and continue to stay and show up every year to help us with our students and our staff, and maintaining a really strong community approach to our school district. As teachers, our daily activities rely on the decisions you make, and the things we do in our classroom rely on the curriculum, the programs, the policies that you put in place. So, it's really helpful to us to have a stable steadfast group of faces to work with year after year. Your continued support for the arts, as we saw tonight, athletics, our SEL programs, having the coaches in the classrooms, having the additional counseling has really embraced what we do as a community and as a district, and supported our teachers with all the needs that we have for our students. I really thank you for investing the time and the support for our district. Your, your balance of the community voices and needs with the student needs, with the staff needs, have made us a really successful place to be and to work, and I know our teachers are proud to be here. As one of the largest districts, as Mr. Amato said, we have 13,000 students that come through our doors, and it's, the help of you that makes that possible and makes what we do possible. So, on behalf of the Bethlehem Education Association, we thank you, each one of you, for your commitment to public education. We're grateful for what you do for our schools, and thank you for showing up and being here every day.
Thank you, Laura, and thanks for your support and partnership. Wanted to, want to recognize each board member individually, and just say a couple of words about their years of service on the board. So, I'll start with Mr. Winston Alloz. Mr. Alloz was appointed by the board in March of 2020 to fill an unexpired term, and then it was elected for a four-year term in November 2021. Mr. Alloz occupies the Region 1 seat. In addition to other service, serves on the Superintendent's Task Force for Excellence and Equity. Thank you, Mr. Alloz. Dr. Karen Beckpulley was elected to the BSD Board in November 2015, and was re-elected to a four-year at-large seat in November 2019. Dr. Beckpulley serves as a Board Facilities Committee Chair and as a BSD trustee on the Northampton Community College Board. Dr. Beckpulley, thank you for your leadership. Dr. Dean Donahue was elected to the board in November 2015 for a four-year term and re-elected in November of 2019. Dr. Donahue serves as a Board Finance Committee Chair and on our Audit Committee. He also serves as a BSD Board Member on the Bethlehem Area Vocational Technical School Board, the Northampton Community College Board, and also serves as a Board Representative on the Bethlehem Employee Benefit Trust. Dr. Donahue, thank you for your service. Mr. Michael Fashionetto was elected to the board in 2009, 13, 17, and November 2021. Holy cow. I know you've been by my side the whole time, so, thank you. Was, November 21, was elected to another four-year term. He was elected Board President in 2011 and continued to serve, serve as, in that role. He serves as a BSD Representative on the BAVTS Board, as well as our PBS, PBS, PSBA liaison. Mike also served a two-year term as President of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Mike, thank you for your service. Mr. Michael Rashudi was recently appointed to the BSD Board in December 2022 to fill the, an unexpired term in the board's Region 2 seat. So, this is continued welcome, and thank you for your service, Mr. Rashudi. Mrs. Shannon Patrick was appointed by the board in December 2011 to fill the Region 2 vacancy. Mrs. Patrick was elected to a four-year at-large seat in 13, 2017, and again in November 2021. She was elected Vice President in December of 2013, continues to serve in the board as Vice President. Miss Patrick also serves as a BSD Representative on the BAVTS Board, the Employee Benefit Trust, as well as the Board Human Resources Committee Chair. Mrs. Patrick, thank you for your service. Mrs. Emily Schenkel was elected to the BSD Board in November 2019 for a four-year term. Mrs. Schenkel serves as a BSD Representative on the BAVTS Board, the Task Force on Excellence and Equity, our Audit Committee, and also on the District Wellness Committee. Mrs. Schenkel, thank you for your service. the Task Force on Excellence and Equity, our Audit Committee, and also on the District Wellness Committee. Mrs. Schenkel, thank you for your service. Dr. Kim Shively was appointed to the board to fill the board regions three vacancy in September of 2019, and was shortly thereafter was elected to the board in November of 2019. Dr. Shively currently occupies the region three seat. Dr. Shively also serves as a curriculum committee chair and as a representative, BSD's representative on the Colonial Intermediate Unit 20 Board. Dr. Shively, thank you for your service. And Dr. Sheila White was elected to the BSD Board in November 2021 for a four-year at-large seat. Dr. White serves as representative on the BAVTS Board as well. Dr. White, thank you for your service. I just want to thank the entire board, and I say this as frequently as I can, mostly to make other superintendents feel bad, that we have the best board of any district around here. And I'm the luckiest superintendent because of that. Our board, no one on this board is here to, for, for a personal agenda or a single-issue person where that is out to cut a program or add a program. Our board members come with open minds and all really look for the best of the district as a whole, and the best for our students and our teachers, and no, nothing, nothing personal. So always at the, at the, at the higher level of what's good for the community and the district. And that's rare. And to have a board that's all, that everyone fits into that category. So thank you. Thank you for that. And we'll close out, looking up in case I've missed anything, we'll close out with a video that we've put together that I think is gonna be over here on the screen. Since we don't have the big screen behind us, it might actually be easier to see than the big screen. And this is just to highlight our board members. I want to thank Barb Kleimer for being the producer on putting that together. We wanted to get a funny picture of Mike at the end, and it turned out it wasn't really that hard to find a funny, funny.
Thank you, Dr. Roy, Mrs. Ketting, Mr. Amato. Appreciate the support, and certainly it's the great team underneath us that really make things happen. We're just, I think, speak for all of us that we're happy to be a part of it and give some direction and be part of an amazing team. I will say, just on a side note, one of those Freedom Choir members happened to be one of my own. And he sang the National Anthem before his soccer game in the fall, and senior night, he was in the theater and, and all different things. And he was never more terrified than to come and stand ten feet in front of us and sing. He's like, please don't look at me. So I took a video of him. Yeah, so. And yeah. Yes, I sent somebody to check on tomorrow morning. So next up on our agenda is courtesy of the floor, anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And it takes us to our reports of student representatives. And if my math is correct, it's Liberty's turn to go first tonight. So, Ms. Ash, it's over to you.
Good evening, Dr. Roy, Mr. Fashionetto, all members of the school board, and all in attendance tonight. Before I discuss what Liberty students have been up to this past month, I want to take a moment to thank Mrs. Jean Benaric for her years of incredible teaching and mentoring. She has shaped the lives of so many students through her leadership in the classroom and in student government meetings, and her kindness will not be forgotten. We will miss you in Missouri, and we hope to make you proud in all that we do. As the first semester comes to a close, Liberty students have been busy honoring their seniors on senior night, creating care packages for St. Luke's patients, and performing at Northampton County Chorus. On December 21st, the senior members of student government, of government, visited the third-grade students at Fountain Hill Elementary School for their second annual Christmas party. The seniors made snowmen ornaments with the kids, read them Christmas stories, and brought them snaps. The kids had a blast, as did the seniors. Thank you to the teachers at Fountain Hill for making this visit possible once again. On January 7th, members of Liberty Chorus united with other singers from the area to perform at the Northampton County Chorus Concert, and they put on an amazing show. On January 16th, the choraliers sang at Holy Ghost Church to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and that was a great performance as well. On Friday, January 13th, the girls' varsity basketball team honored the seniors on their senior night, and they ended the night with a win against Freedom. Their current record is ten to six. Best of luck to them as they wrap up their season. The guys' basketball team is also crushing it on the courts as of late, and they will be celebrating their senior night this Friday, January 27. On Tuesday, January 10th, the Liberty Swim Team hosted a Knock the Socks Off Diabetes fundraiser during their meet to honor the LHS swim alumni, John Jones. Visitors were encouraged to wear their favorite pair of crazy socks, as well as bring money for the basket raffle and bring new socks to donate to the Bethlehem Emergency Shelter. With everyone's help, they were able to raise over a thousand dollars and donate over two hundred pairs of socks. Thank you to everyone for your support. Their senior night was celebrated on Tuesday, January 17th, and the night ended in a win against Pocono Mountain East. The girls' team is currently six and one, and the guys' team is undefeated. Best of luck to them throughout the rest of their season. The girls' wrestling team crushed it at the Cole Pratt Tournament at Jim Thorpe High School this past Saturday, with some wins in under thirty seconds. Best of luck to them throughout the rest of their season. Congratulations to our very own Sidney Howchins for being named as the 2022 Lehigh Valley Live Girls Volleyball Player of the Year. And congratulations to all our athletes who are receiving their D1, D2, or D3 offers for college. Best of luck to you all in the future. Liberty's Angel 34 recently hosted an extremely successful Krispy Kreme fundraiser that raised over twelve hundred dollars for Angel 34 of the Lehigh Valley, a local charity that supports families who have children suffering from pediatric cancer. Angel 34 is hosting their annual Daddy Daughter Dance on Saturday, February 11th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Wesley Church on Center Street. Over a hundred people are signed up to attend, so Angel 34 members are strongly encouraged to sign up to volunteer. Thank you in advance for your support. The sophomore members of student government are currently hosting a donation drive for items to put into care packages for cancer patients at St. Luke's Hospital. The collection ends on February 12th, and the list of needed items can be found in the email from Mr. Truby. Please bring all donations to room 835, and thank you in advance for your support. NHS is hosting their annual blood drive this Wednesday, January 25th, in the Memorial Gym. Students who signed up to donate blood will have the opportunity to receive the red cord at graduation if they donate again in the future. Speaking of graduation, seniors are urged to check their emails regarding ordering their cap and gown. Cap and gown is included in your class dues, so don't wait to order yours. That is all from Liberty. Thank you for your time, and here's to a great second semester.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ash. Over to a report from Freedom. Ms. Florian.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Roy, Mr. Fashionetto, members of the school board, and all of those in attendance tonight. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season with their friends and family. Students at Freedom High School were eager to get back to school for the new year, just in time to finish off the fall semester. This past Friday, today, and tomorrow, final exams and makeups will have, have and will occur. Students and teachers have put an abundant amount of effort towards preparing themselves for these exams, and we hope their work shines as we continue on with our spring semester. Similarly, local colleges have started their spring semester. Students in dual enrollment have met with their professor either in person or online last week to kick off their syllabus week. This is a fantastic opportunity that many students were able to take advantage of, and we wish them the best of luck. Tonight, our boys and girls' basketball teams face Southern Lehigh, boys home, girls away. With a dimo grow fit, the riot squad will be there to support. Also, in our athletics, our competition cheer team finished in fourth place among the small three A teams. The top five teams qualified for the championship championships scheduled for January 27th and 28th in Hershey. They will be holding a send-off to support them in their journey to Hershey on January 27th, where the team's families, friends, and any students are encouraged to attend. Freedom Wrestling won the first duel against Mannheim Township with a final of thirty-three, thirty-one. We are very proud of our athletic teams and hope to see their success continue in these following weeks. Our arts department has been very lucky to have Edwin Fajio, Marian Keller, and Sophia Trembler, who have been selected to represent FHS in the Bethlehem Area School District and the PMEA Region Chorus. Alongside Liberty, Freedom Choir was also able to sing at the Northampton County Chorus Festival. Congratulations also go to Brian Simmons and Alec Rubbery for making the PMEA District 10 Jazz Band for bass. To the best of our knowledge, they are the first students for FHS to make it into the district jazz band, and we congratulate them for this huge achievement. To continue on to student achievement, our DECA students also had a grand time at their competition. Connor Brothers, Joe Braun, and Stephen Gargulio took fifth place. Brady Roche took third, Willie Yang was second, and George Boettress was first-place winner. All of these students listed for their accomplishments, put an exorbitant amount of effort into their crafts, and we love to see them succeed. Lastly, the American Asian Alliance Club will be holding a fundraiser in honor of the Lunar New Year. They will sell fortunes with candies inside for one dollar outside of all lunches. The student government visited Governor Wolf Elementary School to read holiday books to the kindergarten and first aid classrooms. They donated twenty-five books to the classrooms in total. They enjoyed the experience and can't, can't wait to be back as they hold the book drive for Read Across America in March to reach to kindergarten through second-grade classrooms. Students and staffs cannot believe how quick the year is going by, but are very excited to start the spring semester that'll come with new chances, a fresh start, and many opportunities for all. That is all for the month of January here at Freedom High School. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful night.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Florian. Uh, thank you to both our student representatives tonight. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December 19th board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Mrs. Patrick, second. Dr. Shively. Comments on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have the committee minutes of the January 9th combined. Motion to approve those. Dr. Donaher, second. Mrs. Patrick, comments on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries as well. Next up, we have the financial reports, items 701 through 704. Dr. Donner, motion to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Uh, Dr. White, questions or comments on the finance items? Seeing none, Mr. Risticasey, if you can pull the board on 701 through 704, please.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Alosi?
Yes.
Dr. Beck Pooley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Rashudy?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
All motions passed.
Thank you. A report prior to this meeting, we had an executive session. We discussed contract negotiation and personnel. Dr. Roy, anything to report?
Not tonight.
All right. Any unfinished business from anyone on the board? Seeing none, that will take us into our recommendations of the administration. And I would ask, with the board's blessing, we take items 11 and 12 together. That would be 1101, the facilities, and then the curriculum items 1201 through 1206. Is there a motion to approve those two sections all at once? Dr. White, second. Mrs. Patrick, comments or questions on any of those items? Seeing none. Then if you could pull a board on 1101, 1201 through 1206, please.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Alosi?
Yes.
Dr. Beck Pooley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Rashudy?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
All motion passed, nine zero.
Thank you. Next up are the finance items, 1301 through 1305. Dr. Donaher, motion to approve those?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Alosi. Questions, comments on any of these items? Seeing none. If you could pull the board, Mr. Risticasey, on 1301 through 1305.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White? Mr. Alosi? Dr. Beck Pooley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Rashudy?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
All motion passed, nine zero.
Thank you. And lastly, Mrs. Patrick, motion to approve the human resource items, 1401 through 1405?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Shively. Uh, only comment I have, 1401, item A, one. I will regrettably vote yes on that, Mr. Giordano's retirement. We would hope this day would never come, but alas, here we are. So we, you know, with heavy hearts, we accept that, wish you all the best in your retirement. We will certainly have a lot more to say between now and, what is this, June of twenty-four? Twenty-five. Do you want to make an amendment to this motion? All right. Uh, any questions, comments on any of those items? Seeing none. And also, Mr. Giordano, if you look at Mrs. Hogan, she's sticking around for some time, and you two are like a pair. Should have made that a package deal. All right. There's nothing else. Mr. Risticasey, if you could pull the board on 1401 through 1405.
Dr. Shively?
Yes.
Dr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Alosi?
Yes.
Dr. Beck Pooley?
Yes.
Dr. Donaher?
With regret and best wishes for retirement for Mr. Giordano, I vote yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Rashudy?
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Yes.
All motion passed, nine zero.
Thank you. That'll take us on to our reports of committees. First up, Northampton Community College, Dr. Beck Pooley.
Yes, the Northampton Community College Board of Trustees met on January 12th. We had a discussion about a number of things. The one thing I really want to emphasize, though, that the college was able to report on was recent enrollment trends, which have been very hard-hit in the past three, few years, particularly for community colleges and Northampton Community Colleges, seeing their enrollment tick back up in ways that the, the colleges is really, really pleased about. So just a reminder of the incredible resource our students have as dual-enrollers to Northampton Community College, but just a, a great affirmation of the, the work underway on that campus to get those enrollments back up.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next up, a report from the Vocational Technical School, Mrs. Schenkel.
Thank you. We met on January 3rd, and it was a, actually, relatively brief meeting, basically standard business, but we did get the audit report, which I'm happy to say was clean and very well done. Kudos to the business office. And our next meeting is February 7th.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schenkel. Uh, Dr. Shively, a report from the IU?
Uh, we haven't met yet. Uh, this month, we meet on Wednesday.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Task Force for Excellence through Equity, Mr. Alosi, any meeting recently?
There was a meeting. I unfortunately was not there.
All right. Uh, Dr. White, you were not there either. All right. So we'll get a report on that in the future. Then, next up is PSBA report. Not much going on. PSBA, of course, celebrated with others the inauguration of Governor Shapiro last week, keeping an eye on what his first budget address will look like coming up in March. You may have noticed a rebranded Daily Edition coming in your inboxes every day. It's kind of got a refresh, it's cleaned up. It's more of the point. Really nice job. There's also a new liaison kind of advocacy email that's been floating around. So keep your eye on those. Just trying to fresh, freshen things up a little bit. Also, City and State Magazine, I guess it is, released a list of the top one hundred most influential people in Pennsylvania politics. And PSBA CEO Nathan Mains was on there as one of the movers and shakers of advocacy around the Capitol. So that was a recognition of his work and honestly, the organization as a whole. So that was kind of fun to see. Uh, also, Advocacy Day is coming up later in the spring, so please consider registering for that. April 23rd, I believe, is the date. I was trying to pull it up quick, but um, that might not be wrong. So I'll send an email to the board, make sure you have the exact date on that. that might not be wrong. So I'll send an email or make sure you have the exact date on that. And then I'll roll right into the foundation report. We met last Tuesday for our meeting and pretty much the majority focus was on our two thousand twenty-three celebration dinner, which is rapidly approaching. It is on March twenty-first. We will be the first official event in the new expanded Wind Creek Event Center. So if nothing else, come out and see the new facility. There will be some nice little kind of save the date card reminders going around to register. There are sponsorship forms out there. If you need any of this information, you can certainly contact myself or even better, Justin Aiman, the Executive Director, or, you know, somebody in Dr. Roy's office and they'll point you in the right direction of Justin or Taylor. But lots of opportunities just to purchase tickets, to attend, to sponsor. If you know somebody with a business or just have some extra cash you want to throw our way, we would greatly appreciate it. Plenty of sponsorship opportunities, but it's exciting. We have not had a dinner since two thousand nineteen. If you recall, we had a dinner in two thousand twenty and we pulled the plug last minute and then, of course, you know what happened. So it's exciting to be back. It's exciting to kind of break in a new venue. We'll always be the ones who say that we were the first in the lines of like Steve Miller, who opened up the Arts Quest Center. The Foundation will open up the Wind Creek Event Center. Why not? Yeah. It's been a long day. All right. So that's the foundation update. Celebration Dinner, March twenty-first, Wind Creek Event Center. So you have not gotten invited yet officially. We will make sure your email gets bombarded with invitations. Tell your friends and family. And then lastly, Wellness Committee, Mrs. Shankle, been a meeting recently?
No, we have not met since my last report, but we are meeting on February ninth.
All right. Excellent. That'll take us on to newer miscellaneous business. Anything from anyone on the board for that? Seeing none, courtesy of the floor, any items, not just agenda items? Seeing none, that will take us to open forum. Any final words from anyone on the board? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? Okay. Dr. White, Dr. Shively, all in favor? Aye. No one opposed. Board members, please remain in your seats for a group photo. But don't, you're not allowed to leave.